Awesome. You know, I've been there one time. It was when I was in high school. It's so beautiful. I know. So many parts of this state that I want to go to that I haven't gone to.
Yes, I saw that.
Yeah.
There are a lot.
That's where I want to go so bad. Yeah. Now, do you hike there or do you do?
No.
Okay, I've heard good stuff about that. Is that where Hell's Canyon is?
Yeah.
Okay, my sister's done that hike. Yeah, she loved it. She said it was hard hike, but she enjoyed it. Are there some hikes in Hell's Canyon though?
Yeah.
That's what she said, yeah. Okay. Yeah, Joseph. Joseph is a cool little town. They have a lot of sculptures and public art. Yeah. Oh, you went in the winter?
Well, no, it was late winter. It was late winter, so the snows were still on the mountain.
Oh, wow. Nice.
And there were still these snows melting from the mountains.
Ah, cool. Nice. Love hiking and, yeah. I've heard good stuff about it. She's working at Matador and going to school at Portland State full-time. No, she finished up her, she took a year and a half off. Dealing with some anxiety issues. She's going to after she graduates. She's already got her shallow water certificate. She's going to get her advanced deep water after she graduates. I think she wants to work on the coral reef for a few years. Not that they're going to be around in 10 years, but, you know. There's a lot of good science going into how they can preserve it and bring them back, but, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Where's Scott?
Yeah, it's a good question.
He had really bad jet lag. He didn't know if he was going to make it.
Oh, did he tell you that?
He told me that earlier, but I didn't think he meant anything.
He did say he had bad jet lag, so he might have went home. I don't know.
Didn't say anything to me.
Sorry, man.
Didn't say anything to me.
Went back to the dorm and fell asleep.
You know, maybe he found a quiet place. How was he? Oh, well, thank you.
I was going to text.
Yeah.
I saw him upstairs.
Yeah, I didn't think he was going to leave. I know, I'm sorry.
Good to say we believe he's on his way.
I just sent him a text.
Should I wait a minute?
Hard to lose someone between upstairs and downstairs.
There he is.
You can disregard my texts and my phone call.
Quick jog around the block.
Get some airflow.
Such as it is.
Thought you'd gotten a better offer somewhere. Good evening, all. I will call to order a Wilsonville City Council meeting for October 15th at 7:03 PM and request a roll call, please.
Counselor Stevens?
Here.
Counsel President Starr?
Here.
Counselor Akval?
Here.
Counselor Lehan?
Here.
Mayor Knapp?
Here.
Would the audience please rise and join us in a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm open to a motion on order of agenda at this point. Your Honor, I move that we approve the order of agenda.
Second.
Moving second, we approve order of agenda. Copies are available on the counter beside of the room if anyone would like to have one. I see some faces in the crowd. I don't know if anyone is going to want to speak at public input. Please complete a speaker card on the counter from the side of the room, pass it forward to the city recorder, and we will call on you when we get to that point. First up, we have a visit from our Metro Counselor, Mr. Dirksen. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Counselors. Thank you for having me here again tonight. It's always a pleasure to come and meet with your counsel, as I want to do with all of the eight cities within my Metro District. Let me see if I can find my PowerPoint, and we'll see if we can get going here.
All right. How long have you been on council now?
I've been on the Metro Council for almost six years now.
Almost six years.
I'm almost halfway. At the end of this year, I'll be halfway through my second term.
All right, very nice.
As all of you, I'm sure, are aware, before I was on the Metro Council, I was the mayor of Tigard for nine years. So as usual, Metro is up to several different things in our several different areas of responsibility. Okay, and as you may know, Metro has a measure on the ballot next month to raise money for affordable housing. It's recognized that housing affordability is a real crisis in our region and across the state and frankly, across the country. And Metro, in response to multiple requests from several of our regional partners around the region, we are using our regional taxing authority. We're the only entity that actually has the ability to tax regionally, besides TriMed, and their border and things are a little bit different, to raise money, which we would then be able to distribute to the three county housing authorities. And then also, if the constitutional amendment, which is also on the ballot, which would allow public-private partnerships, then money could also be distributed to the four largest cities that also have housing authority, which is Beaverton and Hillsborough and Portland and Gresham. So our goal is to be able to provide those housing authorities, who are already in the business of providing affordable housing, and are doing the best job that they can do with the resources that they have. But obviously, those resources are inadequate, or we would not find ourselves in the crisis that we're currently in. So it's our hope that both of these measures would pass in November, and that would provide the region with about $652 billion, excuse me, $1 million to provide, build or purchase affordable housing. And so that would provide housing if the constitutional amendment does not pass, it'll be able to provide housing for somewhere in the range of about 8,000 people, 8,500 people. If the constitutional amendment passes, which allows that public-private partnership, it makes the money go a lot further, and we'd be able to provide housing for about 12,000 people.
So are you saying that this tax would enable Wilsonville to subsidize other cities?
Well, the money would go to the housing authorities, which are the counties. And so it would then be the county housing authorities, as they do now, who would determine the projects and determine where and how that money would be spent. Obviously, the counties consult with the cities, in particular with regard to where appropriate zoning is and whatnot. So there'd be ample opportunity for Wilsonville and other cities, if this were to pass, to have conversations with their respective counties to determine where and how this money could be spent. In most cases, the counties and other housing authorities, they already have a list of projects that they would love to be able to either purchase or build, but they don't have the resources to do so. So if this were to pass and that money were to become available, they would be able to move forward with projects that, for the most part, they've already identified.
Does Cloughamis County run the ones in Viola?
I don't know for sure.
As the Chair of JPAC, the Transportation Committee, obviously, transportation is always close to my heart. Metro and its partners are coming to the homestretch on the update of the Regional Transportation Plan, or the RTP, which we're required to update every four years. So the last time we did it was in 2014. We're required by law to have completed the update by the end of this year. It will come up to JPAC for consideration, actually this Thursday, October 18th, and then go to the Metro Council for adoption in early December. The Regional Transportation Plan is good. It's the best we can do, based on where we are and what we have. It's putting us on the right path. But there will be more work to do to address congestion and develop reliable funding for moving forward. The constrained list of projects, which is the list of projects that's constrained by the budget of federal, state, regional, and local funds that the greater Portland region can reasonably expect through 2040, comprises about $15.4 billion in capital investments. And there's also about an estimated $13 billion for roadway operations and maintenance, and another $13 billion for transit operations and maintenance. Of that, about $15 billion of capital funds, a quarter billion will go to projects specifically designed to improve freight movement. Now, $15 billion sounds like a lot. I mean, it is a lot, but it's not enough. It's not enough to do everything we want and we need to do for our transportation system. I'm talking about our fiscally constrained list. The RTP actually is two plans. One of them is the fiscally constrained plan, what we can reasonably expect to do. But there's a whole nother plan. It's the strategic plan. It's what we recognize needs to be done in the region if we had the funds to do it. The challenge is, one challenge is, is that we can see that the federal government is not going to reverse its trend of diminishing federal funds for infrastructure. And the plan, as it's finalized, may be the best we can do with our current funding levels, but it's not the best we could do, period. We need to keep looking for new strategies to manage congestion, which may even include value pricing or tolling, which is a discussion that ODOT and the Oregon Legislature have been having. And we need to explore how the region can develop its own funding streams to build the transportation system that we need, not just what we can afford to do. The other thing that we need to do by the end of the year is make a decision on the urban growth boundary, in urban growth management. And four cities have submitted proposals to the Metro Council for UGB expansion. Wilsonville, of course, also King City, Beaverton, and Hillsborough. Now, this year, we've made reforms to our process to try to improve efficiency, affordability, and equity around our region, and also allow more local flexibility. So we're asking cities to tell us more about how they plan to address housing affordability within their cities. We also want to know what cities plan to do to get input from diverse communities on their expansion plans, and we want to know how they plan to pay for growth, including the infrastructure that we've been talking about. So we expect to finish the review of the four proposals and come to a decision by the end of this year. Our decision is, will be informed by a number of things, including expert analysis from our technical staff and from other subject experts as well. Finally, it's important to note that we have so much more flexibility than we've had in the past to make a decision, not just now, but also into the future. So if a city isn't quite ready to move forward with an expansion, we get to revisit that again in just three years. And we are able to add up to 1,000 acres without going through the complex urban growth review that we've always had to do in the past, thanks to reforms that were recommended by mayors, county commissioners, the home builders, Thousand Friends of Oregon, and others, and supported by Metro and approved by the Legislature in 2017. So to ensure that the areas that we add to the UGB are really ready for development and don't sit idle for years, as has sometimes happened in the past. In July, the Metro Council approved a, oops, I went too far. Excuse me. Why isn't it going back? Except that. There we go. Metro Council approved a business food scraps separation ordinance. About 20% of the garbage that goes into landfills are food scraps and other organics, but actually, they're a challenge for many reasons. It makes the garbage that goes into the landfill a lot wetter. It also creates a lot of methane gas as it decomposes, which is a bad pollutant into the atmosphere. And frankly, it's too valuable to just dump into a hole in the ground. There's a lot of other things we can do with that energy-rich organic material. But it also reduces the amount we put into the ground by a considerable amount. So we've decided to require businesses that are certain types of food service businesses, like food processing facilities, schools, hospitals, large institutions that create a lot of food scraps, to begin separating out in their garbage so that it can be dealt with separately. That achieves a couple of things. First of all, what goes into the landfill is a lot drier, easier to deal with, much less likely to contaminate groundwater or create pollution as it decomposes. And then we can take those food scraps, and we are working on contracts with private companies that can take those food scraps and convert them to captured methane gas that could then be injected into the natural gas system that we all use. And what's left over can either be used for fertilizer, or if there's no market for that, can just be put into the sewage treatment system. And either way, it doesn't go into a landfill. Can be dealt with another way. But you can recapture a lot of energy from all that as well. There are other things as we go forward in the future, other ways that can be used too, as the technology develops and as the market develops for those scraps. So the certain types of businesses will be required to separate their food scraps, starting in 2020, and we will phase it in from large companies to small over five years. This isn't something that's going to be required of residential customers. There's just not the volume there to make it worthwhile, and we don't want to put the burden on average homeowners. It's not necessary. But this will get a lot of food scraps out of our garbage. The rules and requirements about this new requirement will be available for public comment. It's there now, up through early fall. The information is available at www.oregonmetro.gov/foodscraps, and you can learn more about it there. Now we can talk about parks and nature. Grants from the 2016 levy were awarded in June, the Nature and Neighborhoods Community Grants. 14 grants were awarded emphasizing building cultural, environmental, and economic equity. Metro is inviting the community to now help shape a potential Parks and Nature Bond measure that voters would consider in 2019. As you may know, Metro previously went to the voters twice, once in 1995 and once in 2006, with bond measures to do capital projects, purchase property, and do capital projects for improvements to that property, to protect water quality, air quality, wildlife habitat, and also to provide people with access to nature. The first of those bonds is going to retire. And so if we look at a bond measure in 2019, it would be a replacement for the original bond. So it would not result in an increase in taxes, but it would only be a replacement for a bond that is retiring right now. A future bond measure could build on decades of voter investments that have allowed Metro to protect that clean water, restore fish and wildlife habitat, and connect with nature close to home. A new bond measure could also advance Metro's commitment to racial equity, making sure that all people benefit from investments in parks and nature, and finishing and refining the system we've built. With the first two bond measures, probably partly because of the Great Recession, we were actually able to purchase way more acres of land than we'd first anticipated, to the point where originally, Metro became a park provider because Multnomah County gave us their parks, and it was about 3,000 acres. But we've purchased about 14,000 acres of open space with our two bond measures. So now we're responsible for about 17,000 acres of parks and open space, some of which include existing parks like Oxmo Regional Park and Blue Lake Park in east Multnomah County. And we've also been able to create other parks, like a Shalhoub Bridge Park up on top of the Shalhoub Mountains, about 11,000 acres, excuse me, 1,100 acre park up there that's still under development. And so a new bond measure would allow us to go in and refine the process, refine the capacity that we have, also find gaps in what we've purchased and be able to fill those in, to create just the raw land that we now have into a park system that's functional. Park stakeholder table is being convened to provide input to the Metro Chief Operating Officer on a framework for a potential bond, and conversations with local jurisdiction staff about their priorities for a future bond are also ongoing. We're in the process of building a Convention Center Hotel. You may have seen it as you've gone by on Interstate 5. I think it's going to be 14 stories. I think it's currently at about 10. We're about 30% done with construction and expect it to be complete in an operation by the end of the third quarter of next year. Since we've expressed that we're going to do the Convention Center Hotel, 31 total conventions have been booked that include a Hyatt room block. It's going to be a Hyatt Regency Hotel, with an estimated total of 140,000 room nights. In fiscal year 2018, that ended at the end of June, 25 conventions were booked, specifically because of the hotel's availability at the Convention Center. The group specifically selected Portland due to the availability of a Hyatt block of 250 to 550 rooms. Six additional conventions are confirmed with a Hyatt room block that likely would have come to Portland nonetheless. But since July 1st, Travel Portland and the Oregon Convention Center sales teams have confirmed six more conventions that include a Hyatt room block. With visitors spending an average of about $404 per day, that means an additional $115 million in economic impact for our region, just thus far. And we don't even have the Convention Center Hotels not even built yet. And to throw another figure at you, independent analysis shows that the Convention Center and activity at the Convention Center injects almost $1 billion, $968 million of economic activity into the Portland metropolitan area every year. The project is also making significant progress toward meeting our goals around social equity in the workforce. To date, the overall workforce working on the hotel is approaching 29% people of color and 8% women. The hotel project adopted these goals before we began, of 20% apprentice hours and workforce of 15% female and 30% people of color. So we're working close and moving close to that goal. Those are the things that I had to present to you this evening. I would be happy to answer questions or address any other issue that you may choose to talk about.
Well, thank you very much for those perspectives. Just to be clear, as I understand it, Metro Council has asked a resolution to be prepared that would approve Wilsonville's urban growth boundary, Frog Pond expansion, as well as the other three. That's...
That's correct. In preliminary discussions with the Metro Council, we've generally accepted the proposals from all four cities. It's likely that our approvals will include some conditions. Those applying to Wilsonville, you and your staff should already be aware of those. I don't think Wilsonville was, it was primarily, well, I won't get to specifics, but some other cities that we requested and are going to have some requirements and to approve their expansion would require them to address some issues that we've identified. I know that, you know, Wilsonville, you guys have been ready for a long time. You've had an opportunity to refine, have conversations with Metro over the last several years, and come up with a proposal that's very acceptable to all parties. And so I look forward to being able to vote yes on that.
Very nice. Counsel, any questions for Counselor Dirksen? Counselor Starr?
You had a section on solid waste and food scraps.
Yeah.
Didn't we try to get a solid waste recycling place here in Wilsonville? Was it Metro that...
It was BioSort.
Okay.
And they were tied into Republic Services. There were going to be a complete life cycle of food waste to power their CNG-powered trucks. One of the proposals that was submitted, I think another one was the city of Portland?
Well, it's Waste Management, specifically in North Portland, that made the other proposal.
Is it tied into some sewer plant or something?
That's correct. Part of, one of the reasons why we chose them is because their facility actually already exists and already has a contract with the city of Portland to deal with the effluent that would come from it. So they're already in place.
And ours was in place as well, because we had land use entitlements already.
A proposal that would require construction of an anaerobic digester and some other things. So...
So it was an all or nothing versus both and? I mean, is there a chance for Wilsonville to get something like this in the future?
Absolutely. Over time, this is just how we're going to get started. We expect this to grow and expand over time, and I think there'll be other opportunities in the future.
My understanding is that one of the reasons why you're only looking at one site is because there's not enough, well, there's not a guarantee of enough food waste to power more than one operation.
Until we've done it for a while and we make sure we will have a guaranteed stream, it would be difficult for us to overcommit.
Sure.
Counselor Stevens?
Can you give us an update on what's going on at the zoo?
Sure, I'd love to. We are in the final stages of improvements in construction at the zoo as part of the zoo bond. We anticipate that all of the construction will be done by 2020. The last things that are being built right now is improvements to the primate exhibit, and we're completely rebuilding the polar bear exhibit in anticipation of being able to get new polar bears. As you know, Nora, we sent off-site, so that, first of all, so she wouldn't be alone. She would be with other polar bears. And having her off-site allowed us to not have to figure out how to deal with that while we were doing the construction. It's going to make construction much simpler, not having to cope with figuring out where Nora could live. We have had some challenges. Since we first built that, or got that bond approved by the people, and we came up with a budget and a plan for the different things we were going to construct, including elephant lands and the new penguin thing, and the education center, and the new clinic, hospital for the animals, all those things, construction costs have gone up over 20%. And so we've had to go back and value engineer these last projects to keep under budget. And fortunately, we'd included contingency monies in our budget, and so we're able to incorporate those as well. And we'll still be able to build and create excellent projects, but we've had to tweak them a bit to stay within budget. Still planning on being done by the end of 2020.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Excellent.
All right, sir. Thank you very much for the update. Appreciate you coming out and bringing us that information.
So as much as I'd love to hang around and see the rest of your agenda, today's my wife's birthday, so gonna head home.
Happy birthday to her.
So Wilsonville experienced a difficult situation, I guess you would say, a concerning situation with gun shooting in Memorial Park last week, and the council is all very much focused on this. Staff has been having discussion involving our... Staff has been having discussion involving our chief also on what possible ways to address this there might be. And I think it probably would be appropriate, I have several speaker cards on that topic, and I know the council has questions, but I think that it would be probably appropriate to ask our chief to come up and speak about this before we get into individual discussions so that everybody can hear what dialogue has occurred and what ideas are kind of being prioritized or moved forward. And then we will be happy to have individual comments from whoever.
I'd like the Parks Director, Mike McCarty, to join in because we also had discussions about some possible improvements to the security of the park.
Okay.
The gate we have right now is apparently people have figured out how to override the magnetic strip, so we have some possible solutions.
All right, so please give us your...
Maybe have the chief start, and then Mike can talk about the security.
Good evening, Council Mayor. Robert Werps here, Chief of Police for Wilsonville. I'm going to start with a quick recap, just so everybody knows what's going on, and then I'll give some more up-to-date information and then follow up with what we're doing and our collaboration with other departments. To begin, so Friday night, just before 10 o'clock, we responded to a 911 call at Memorial Park. The report was that someone had been shot. Detectives came out along with patrol deputies and investigated the scene. That person was taken to the hospital, the victim, a 21-year-old male. He's still at the hospital. We were able to talk to him this morning to get some more information from him. He was also able to give us a sketch of one of the suspects involved. There was four people in the car, the suspect vehicle, and they fled the scene that night. Forensics also came out that evening and seized some forensic evidence. And I just want to make sure to remember, we're pretty much in a society of instant gratification, everything's at our fingertips, but when it comes to forensic science and deep investigations, those things take a little bit of time. But I assure you, we leave no stone unturned, that everything is going to be examined, every person interviewed, and every lead that we get followed up on, on this case. Moving forward from that, though, I know that we've had a history of some criminal mischief and other things. Let me back up even further. I'm concerned too, right? This was shocking to me as well. I'm a father. My kids go to the park often without me now. So when I get calls like this, it's personal too, because I want my kids to be safe and I want people to feel safe at parks. I see kids here tonight. I'm sure that's related, and I can certainly relate to that. I know my daughter loves going there, as do I. But that being said, so we're going to take some actions on that, too. We're going to be enforcing a lot more than we have in the past. We've been through there, we go through there daily, random points of the day and sometimes at night. We'll be more vigilant about that. We'll also be working in collaboration with our partners here at the Parks Department, engineering, and the community about ideas moving forward. And I don't have solid answers tonight because those things also, we need to discuss what those will be. I don't want them to be knee-jerk reactions. I want them to be solid ideas on how we can move forward and be better in crime prevention to prevent these things from happening. My last assignment was with Trima Police, and so a lot of our discussions were with what we called SEPTED, and that was crime prevention through environmental design. And I think that this park is ripe, right for that. And that's where we can sit and talk about improving gates, adding gates, improving the time at when it's closed, improving paving, where to put, you know, parking barriers and all that, to just really kind of disrupt any open areas where like right now, we have people doing cookies and things like that. So, Mike, I'll have you pipe in a little bit about some of the master plan designs moving forward and then some of more immediate things. Do include lighting. I know that some of the sports fields are too bright, right? We've had some complaints about that's too bright, maybe we can come up solutions that are not quite as bright, and also consider even possibly adding cameras to that area.
Yeah, in the master plan for Memorial Park, Mike McCarty, pardon, sorry, but for Memorial Park, we do have phases, phase one, two, three. One of those phases is the parking lot by the River Shelter where they do the donuts, as the chief alluded to, and we can escalate that to the top if need be. We have already kind of changed the phases where we put in trees and rocks and things for the neighbors there because they were saying that people would do the donuts and rocks would go against their house and fences and all those things. So we did, those are already in place. But other things we can do as far as the gates go, we have three gates down there. One goes down to the park, one goes to the left to the dog park, and one goes to the River Shelter where they do the donuts and things. Our staff's already looking at trying to automate those gates and possibly look at trying to put those in where we can, same as the irrigation, where we can do it online and on phones and close them anytime we want. We're talking about closing them from November until May where there's no more shelter rentals, and those are the things we're looking at right now. All those are viable, and we think all those are valuable, so we're looking at those with the chief and see what we can do to help mitigate these situations, so.
So at a high level, we're just, we're going to come up with as many ideas as we can. We're going to put them through the feasibility funnel, and there's going to be some costs involved with them, and then we'll bring those back to council and have a discussion about how you want to prioritize those. So those things won't happen right away. The things that we can do right away is we can increase visibility. I talked to the chief today about just making it part of the shift briefing or part of the standard protocols that the night shift goes down there 15 minutes after the park closes, and if there's cars down there, maybe have a conversation, let the people know that they have to leave. So there are some little things we can do on an ongoing basis that I think will have a good impact. My understanding is that the individuals involved in the shooting are not from this area, we don't think, so it might, it might have been just one of these one-off kind of situations, but that'll all come out during the investigative investigation.
And we can implement the closure during the non-rental months. We can do that whenever the city manager or council pleases, which is usually, it used to be October 15th, but now the weather's really nice, so probably November 1st until, like I said, April or May, we can close that gate to that one particular spot, and we will automate all gates.
Just to follow up on Mr. Cosgrove's comments, that's true, this is, and I don't want to minimize this, right? But we do a lot of data-driven policing, trying to look where the problems are, and this is definitely a statistical anomaly. Again, I don't want to minimize it, this is a big deal, but it is, there's been no increase in violent crime, there's been no increase in gang-related activity or anything else, graffiti even, that would have been an indicator to preclude this, so.
Most of what we get down there is criminal mischief, vandalism, underage drinking, kids going out there and doing cookies out on our sports fields. That's kind of been most of what we've seen down there, some graffiti. This, this one, you know, obviously has caught everybody's attention because it's not something that we've experienced in Wilsonville, and it's not something that, you know, we're going to just say it's a one-off. We need to do something about it, but we do need to keep these things in perspective. At the same time, we need to make sure that that's not an attractive place for that to happen in the future as well.
Yeah, do all those, all those kinds of behaviors, and maybe, you know, the gunplay, you know, as an extreme end of that, indicate people feel like they're out of sight, not being monitored, don't have anybody looking over their shoulder, kind of, I mean, if that's the case, does that suggest a priority for how we increase the oversight?
Well, the oversight will be increased, and I think once that happens, folks that maybe think that they're getting comfortable down there will no longer feel comfortable when they see an officer down there every night. So I think that'll take care of a majority of the riffraff. But I still think there's some security issues with that park because it's so isolated, there's no visibility from the major thoroughfares. We're always going to have issues down there, but I think we want to take away as many of the attractive nuisance types of things that go on down there as we possibly can, understanding that we're not going to catch every bad behavior that goes on in that park, but we certainly want to make it known that we're doing everything, everything that we can as a city to minimize those. And the other thing I would add is that the best thing for us is the people that live in the neighborhood. If you see something, say something. If you see something that maybe doesn't look right, call the police. If you don't think it's an emergency, call a non-emergency number. I can have the chief work with the HOA down there. We can give a presentation on how they can interact with law enforcement. But the worst thing that people can do is to engage with something or someone that they think is maybe doing illegal activity. We don't want to encourage that. We want them to call the police, because they're trained professionals. So that can be another thing that we can organize with the folks that live in the Renaissance Boat Club. We can do a little mini-town hall for their neighborhood to tell them and the other neighborhood that's adjacent to it, on how they can help us with those types, those kinds of activities because they are the first ones to hear and see it when it does happen.
That sounds worthwhile to me. I don't, rest of the council, you know, need to have your perspectives also. Counselor Leahy?
Well, you mentioned it, that kind of went by it, the, what the role of video surveillance is. I'm, I'm a board member of the Oregon Cemetery Association, and I can tell you that that's increasingly used in, to monitor cemeteries, including the one that I take care of, and they are usually isolated, and, and just with trail cams, I mean, I can get license plates off of everybody coming in and out.
We do have some down there now, but the quality of the video is horrible, so we need to look at what kind of...
And, and that's what I was going to say, is that the quality of video on these things is getting better, like every month.
Technology.
It's cheaper and better, and, and runs on Wi-Fi, so you can monitor it somewhere else.
We did talk about technology as a solution at our executive team meeting this morning, and part of the executive team is Andy, who's on our, he's our IT director, so he's going to be looking into some camera options for us as well.
It seems like there are few enough entrances...
Right.
...that, that you can get the, you can at least get license plates. And one of the things about them, they're all timestamped. Every single picture is timestamped, so you know exactly when they went in, when they went out. It's a lot of information.
The technology is also something we're looking at.
I agree.
And Counselor Starr, please. This is really important, and I don't want to minimize this, but if we start having, and I would like to see patrols down there daily, I don't want to open the door for another place in the city to have the same thing happen, so we're definitely going to make sure, have to make sure that there's just a higher presence in a lot of places that resemble Memorial Park from a standpoint of space, isolation, things that make it attractive to some folks, that we just have to make it extremely unattractive, especially in the evenings, so.
We do regular patrols down there, but I think the thing that makes this park particularly difficult as well, from a standpoint of being a criminal, it's the most stupid place to commit a crime because...
There's one way in and one way out, yeah.
Plus, it's not like you can drive 70 to get in and out either, but it's just, it's so isolated and there's no viewing point from any major arterial, so it's a special, it's a special problem that requires a special set of solutions.
I agree, Counsel, and it's always a balancing act for us, and we'll definitely do our best to balance it out and give it the attention it needs, not ignoring other places.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I would just add, it was, it was Sheriff Roberts who offered me trail cams originally when we were having vandalism issues, so.
Well, maybe offer us some.
So they offered them, I mean, this was a few years ago, and since then, we've bought our own, but, but, but the sheriff's department was, was offering them to a number of other remote locations where you have mischief going on.
Yeah, electronic eyes, you know, are helpful if we don't have human eyes all the time.
And I can also tell you the neighbors down there have been awesome as far as letting us know when they see something. They get ahold of the park supervisor, myself, as far as different things, as far as donuts, as the city manager alluded to, and they are on top of it. But again, that's not really their job to do that, but they, they're great eyes and ears as far as community goes.
Okay, good. So I would encourage you gentlemen both to stay. We have several members of the public who would like to make comments on this topic, if you would please, and we will hopefully take it all to heart, and it won't be too long, I hope, Mr. Cosgrove, before we are able to vet those different alternatives and come up with a strategic plan and get it scheduled to move forward.
No, I don't think it'll take that long to bring back ideas. Again, it's always an issue of budget and whether or not we have allocated funds to do specific projects that may be a little more expensive, and there's also the weighing of all the other projects, so the low-hanging fruit stuff, the additional patrols, some of the security stuff that won't take a lot of money, we can do all that now. I don't think that the video technology stuff would be overly expensive. I think we could accommodate at least a portion of that into our existing budget, so everything we can do now, we will do now. Anything that might require a little more time, thought, and money, that we'll bring that back to you.
All right, thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. And I guess I would like to ask the members of the public, first of all, that are on this topic, before we go to other topics, and we do have a couple of other topics also, so I guess I should read our formal protocol here. Citizens' input is an opportunity for visitors to address counsel on things that are not on the agenda, also a time to address things that are on the agenda but not scheduled for public hearing. We will make every effort to respond to questions raised during citizens' input, either before tonight's meeting ends or as soon as possible thereafter. We do request you keep your comments to about three minutes. We have a little green-yellow-red stoplight there for you to kind of monitor how the time is going, so could I ask for Brittany Armstrong first, please?
Can you make that? Stand next to me? Hi. My name, Brittany Armstrong. Yes. And these are my sons, Gabe and Owen. So we, I, my husband Andy and our younger son are at swim lessons. We bought our home, we live right pretty much on the park. We brought our home in 2008, and luckily, we were out of town this weekend when the shooting happened. Gabe, hold on, buddy. And initially, when we bought our home, and we've always considered the noise in the park, even the lights, you know, have, we have a one-story home, so even the lights haven't bothered us too much. But I would say, over the last few years, the noise has gotten worse. It's become less friendly. With the increased traffic in the park, there's more car speeding behind our house. I'm also a teacher at Wilsonville High School, so I have a lot of teenagers who make comments about the activities that go on down in the park. They have videos of, hold on one second, honey, of, yes, you can. They have videos, you know, of their friends spinning cookies in that gravel parking lot behind the new homes in the new neighborhood. And really, I'm here because I'm, I mean, concerned about our safety as a family, but then, you know, just kids who are walking around in the park, even, so the new crosswalk was put in and there's stop signs there, but cars, I've watched cars while we're at the playground blow through that stop sign. They don't stop, you know, I have young kids. I, we're working on stopping at crosswalks, but just making sure that, like you said, there's more monitoring. You know, I get nervous, and I know the people that live in our neighborhood get nervous that when there's reckless drivers, you know, that somebody's going to go through one of our fences. The gate to that, into the park, and that is supposed to limit access to the road behind our homes, to my knowledge, has not been closed in several years. I have not seen it closed, and we spend a lot of time in the park. So I think I'm encouraged by some of the solutions or the possible options to mitigate that high-risk activity in the park area, but, you know, I think for us, you know, that neighborhood support and even, you know, financial, whatever we need to do to get those things done and make sure our neighborhood is safe for our kids is most important, so. Okay? You ready to go home? Okay, I think it's time for us to go to bed. Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming forward. Errol Bradley, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Here in council. Name is Errol Bradley. We live on 31062 Southwest Salmon Lane. We back directly to the River Shelter. I mean, you can't get better eyes and ears than myself. Besides having a one-year-old that turns one on Saturday and being on the phone with the police, I don't think I've slept in a year. I mean, it's, you guys, it's all the time, I'm telling you. And I don't know if it's the rest of the park, but it's the River Shelter. The other night, five nights ago, four nights ago, heard a car out there going, this night they ripped up the park, and I ran out there, the rocks were flying against the fence, hitting the house. against the fence, hitting the house. I got the license plate number of the car the next night, jumping over the fence. I know you guys don't like me to encounter these people, but it gets old. The shooting, yeah, the other night, I, you guys have to remember that even if the gate is shut, I know there was the police there today, there was a motorhome down there, and I got a photo from the better half of the police with, that were down there. It's, it's them having access to the park. So, this kid named Chris, which was the instigator to the shooting that I know of, I've seen him for a year. I think he lives in the park. He's early twenties, and he, he walks in and out, he's got, I think his mother that comes up and consoles him and says hi and bye. Drug dealer, you see their fireball going into the pocket and the drugs. I've called the police about Chris, saying Chris is the instigator. I had a confrontation with him maybe two months ago at 2:30 in the morning, and he is extremely aggressive, and, that I know of, he, I couldn't believe it. After the shooting, I was right there, and, and he was applying pressure too at some point in time when the officers showed up. And I couldn't believe it was Chris. I mean, he's directly involved. So, yeah, getting, getting the lower gate closed and getting somebody in there to do a sweep, I've seen officers come in at two, two in the morning, one in the morning, and there's people with their, with their tents set up, and they, or sleeping in their car, and they get their driver's license, and they check them all out, and they're fine, and they leave, and they camp all night. I mean, they, they stayed in their tent till the morning time. I think, you guys, it needs to be black and white, and what is the law? If the park closes at 10, and the gate closes at 10:40, and they're already in the store, you gotta go get them out of the store, whatever means it takes. So, like I said, I am the eyes and ears. I mean, if you guys are the doctors and you're coming to me, you need to ask me, where does it hurt? I know where it hurts. I'm the guy. My window looks right into the shelter, and it's every night, every single night, and, and they're at the shelter. I mean, I can, I can go down there all the time, every single night. So, like I said, I'm Errol Bradley. I'll give you my number. Like I said, I am the eyes and the ears when nobody else is there. I could tell you who lives in their cars every day in the park. I could tell you who comes in afterwards. Thank you for your time.
All right, sir. Thanks very much.
Can I just say that if, if you're hearing noises after hours, that's disturbing the peace, so that's a call to a police officer. That's something that we can usher people out of the park for that reason. So, the police chief is here, he's heard what you've said.
Yeah.
That's not something that we want to encourage, and camping in city parks is, is not legal, so we can address those issues, and I can assure you going forward that they will be addressed.
Appreciate it, God. Thank you.
Thank you. Caitlin Martinez, please.
Okay. We're not going to make it much longer, but these are, I mean, these are the faces of that neighborhood. We, I mean, the shooting was maybe 10 feet from our backyard. I, I think about, you know, if those bullets had missed, you know, I mean, if they came into my house, this is important, this is serious, this is not a new problem. I could honestly say I'm surprised this hasn't happened sooner with the amount of activity that goes on down there. I, I grew up in that neighborhood. I've lived in this town for over 30 years. That park never used to be like that. Those gates were closed, that park was regulated, and now it's like a free-for-all. It's ridiculous, it's insane, and something needs to be done about it before it's one of our kids that is the next victim. An innocent, I mean, truly innocent bystander that, you know, isn't down there causing trouble, just living there, that just wants to play in their backyard, that wants to be safe. So, I mean, I really hope that now that you see these faces, that this is taken serious, and something needs to be done. I don't care if it's closing that gate, you know, sooner, I don't care, I mean, something needs to be done. So, I mean, I, I'm hopeful, I, I like some of the, some of the things that were said here tonight as far as like what can be done, and I just hope that that actually happens. Yes? Okay, now it's my turn.
All right, thanks very much.
I have an answer. Bye-bye.
Mark Biondi, please.
Hi, council members. My name is Mark Biondi. Thank you for taking the time to address this issue. So, along with some of the other neighbors that are here, I also border the park. I'm not in the Renaissance Boat Club, I'm in Daydream Ranch, I'm one of the older homes that's there. I think there's a lot of specifics that we could get into about what happened on what night. This is what's going on. I think that what needs to be conveyed mostly, especially to the police associations, is that we're frustrated. People get frustrated when you complain about a problem and it's not addressed, or it's brushed over, excuse me, or we feel like it's not addressed. I have a neighbor who's jumping fences because he's getting tired of calling the police and them not showing up. I have park officials saying that it's not being addressed because it's really not a high-crime area. It's all petty stuff, so it doesn't, you know, we don't need to chase people out of a park because of that. Petty crimes, to me, are, are a symptom of a bigger problem, you know. If I can make an analogy, oftentimes in the past, it's been said that pot is a gateway drug to other more serious drugs. Figure petty crimes are just a gateway to more serious things. Right now, we had a more serious thing happen. To say that this is an isolated event, I personally heard of stories from my neighbors that this isn't the first time that gunplay has been involved in the park. It's the first time that someone has been shot and there's a victim in this case, but it's not the first time that guns have been drawn in that park. I've heard of guns being drawn down on the, on the dock. I personally am not privy to that, but this is coming from my neighbors' people that I trust and believe because we're living it. Overall, I feel that the attitude that we have is frustration. We call the police, there's no response, or if there is a response, it's 15 minutes later. You know, crimes happen much faster than that, you know. I understand, I suspect it's kind of difficult to police such, this area so quickly when we are a contract force, you know. Oftentimes, the, the police officers in the association that we are contracted with are policing elsewhere or busy elsewhere, you know, and I don't know that they stick in Wilsonville, because if they do stay in Wilsonville, I don't understand why it takes 15 minutes.
Can I just correct that? Because there are people in the room, and I don't want anybody to think that just because we contract with Clackamas County, those aren't our officers. Every one of those officers work exclusively in Wilsonville, and they don't go outside of Wilsonville to police.
Okay, okay. So, and if that's the case, then my frustration is sometimes when we, we make these calls, the response time just seems like terrible. You know, people are doing donuts in the park, of course, they're going to leave, and you can, you can't do 70 out of that park, but I can guarantee you can do 50 out of there. Friday, that car was probably doing close to 60.
I think, I think it would be good to have the neighborhood meetings for both Daydream and Renaissance, because I, I think there's a lot of facts that we would like to share with you about the number of calls and how long it takes to respond to those calls, because we actually have data to show-
Sure.
-when we got the call, when we responded. I just want folks to remember that we don't have a ton of police officers on duty, depending on the time of day or night, and we only have two on with one supervisor, and they could be out on more higher priority calls.
Sure, absolutely.
The way the dispatch works is that certain calls take a higher priority than others, so that doesn't mean that donuts in your neighborhood aren't a high priority for you. It just means that they might be on a more higher, higher priority call at the time.
I understand.
So, they might not be able to get there, like on a Priority One call, that might be under two minutes. A Priority Three or Four might take a little more time, so-
No, and I understand that.
I do think we need to engage with the neighborhoods so that we're all on the same sheet of music, we can share information, and going forward, we can maybe break down some of these communication challenges that we're having right now.
Sure, yeah, and I understand that. And if you want to bring data to this meeting with the Neighborhood Association, also bring the time that it takes when we call the non-emergency number, because I don't call 911 when there's someone doing donuts in a park.
Sure.
It's grass, there's no victim, okay? But I call the non-emergency number, come down, sweep the park, get everybody out of it, you know. You're hearing from some of the neighbors around it that the problem is bigger than you think it is. It may not be as big a problem as you think it is, but there's definitely a problem, and it starts with people just being able to loiter, hang around places they shouldn't be. And if the parks would follow the own rules that they set, that are posted about after dark, after sunset, there are some solutions, because I know we do like night games and things like that down there. There are solutions that are out there for people to be able to access before dark and leave after dark, you know, and not be allowed entrance back into the park stuff. So, I like what I'm hearing. Please, please understand, though, that this isn't, I've gone to the Parks Board myself and complained about some of these issues, and oftentimes, it just, it really feels like, okay, we hear you, we'll do something, and then nothing gets done. And it's sad that it takes something of this magnitude to get the attention that we feel it needs, but-
So, what I'm hearing is that it's a quality of life issue, and it's, just because it may be small issues, that doesn't mean that it's not a big issue if you can't sleep. So, I respect that.
Okay.
You have my ear, and we will come and have a conversation with your neighbors.
Okay, great. Thanks for your time.
Thank you very much. I don't have any other speaker cards on this topic. Are there any other people that would like to speak on this topic? All right, I'm not seeing anyone, so I do have another topic here I guess I will move to and invite Mike Grant to come forward.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, city representatives. I'm Mike Grant. I'm running for Clackamas County Assessor position, and I'm going out and meeting all kinds of different council members to introduce myself and give you a little of my background on why I should be elected. And first of all, the assessor's office is really a critical office in the county. It's not the most glamorous, which is obvious, but we value over $50 billion in real estate every year. I own, collect $811 million in taxes last year, which goes to the 133 districts, which you are one of. So, it's a critical point of getting that money to the districts. Over 50% of the staff in the assessor's office are appraisers or value the property. That's the biggest component of what we do. So, being an appraiser and understanding valuation is a critical component. What we need is really to elect an experienced manager and an appraiser. And I don't want to say anything negative about my opponent because she's not here to defend herself. However, she has no degree. She's never done a field appraiser in 34 years, working for the government, and she's only had a job with the government. In comparison, I do have degrees. Business Administration, MBA Finance Management. I've got over 20 years' private experience. I have a lot of management experience. I've owned my own companies, a mortgage company, a real estate company, a real estate trust. I've worked for multiple other organizations, staff and management. And, most recently, in the last eight years, I've been in government, so I understand both sides of it. And I brought my private management experience to government. I was the assessor, tax collector, and chief appraiser at Clackamas County. Last three years, I've been here at Clackamas County, and I see how much improvement needs to be done. And I've been working as the industrial and commercial appraiser for Clackamas County, and Wilsonville's one of my territories. So, it's, I've got the valuation experience, I've got the education. What really is needed in our office that the public doesn't see is a manager that can come in and bring those efficiencies to that government operation. So, that's why I'm here introducing myself, and hopefully you can spread the word. If you like me, I'm on Facebook. But please vote for Mike Grant. Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Grant?
Say your name again.
Mike Grant.
Okay.
Mike Grant. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
I do not have any other speaker cards. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on public input tonight? I'm not seeing anybody further. I guess, just to recap the question on the, the issues at the park, it's pretty clear that this is a pretty major issue for a significant segment of our populace. So, I think that it's likely the council will really want to see actions that will change the dynamic that has been there. Clearly, some of the descriptions I find troubling about repeated activity there after dark, people that are there, all this sort of thing. So, we, we just have, in my view, we just have to come up with some strategies that, that change that dynamic, and that's what I'm going to be hoping to hear.
Well, I hope that you heard that from me as well.
Okay, all right. Anything else, Councilor?
I, I would just say, I, I was surprised to hear that it had been going on as long as it had, or that we had the overnight camping or whatever. Has that been, been an issue?
I've heard of some homeless issues that are-
And I know we have-
-damaged to the entire region, but I haven't heard of anybody specifically camping in Memorial Park.
In Memorial Park.
Doesn't mean it hasn't happened. I don't know enough about, because it's anecdotal. I mean, I, I hear the, the claims, but I don't know what our responses have been.
And I, I thought we were always locking the gates.
It is locked. It's on a timer, but it is-
I don't know what other gate they're talking about. I mean, I know there's multiple-
There's another gate that leads to the, the river shelter that has not been locked for many years.
Yeah, yeah.
I think the proposal was maybe we need to start doing that. So, let me just categorically go through every one of those issues and, and solutions and come back to you. I mean, some of the low-hanging fruit stuff, I probably won't come back to you.
Yeah.
I'll just probably implement.
I mean, the, the cookie thing, a camera will do, do away with that.
It would. We have some cameras down there, because we've had some arson and vandalism.
And you post it, you clearly post 24/7 video surveillance?
Yes.
And we take license plates.
We don't want to point out where the cameras are, though.
No, no, no. No, you don't put the sign-
You just want them to think wherever they are, they might be on camera.
They put that right up at the entrance to the park. I agree, that's a great solution.
Entrance to the park, and down at the parking lot, anywhere, anywhere around where, where you're having that activity, you need multiple signs. I've got, I've got four video signs in the, in my little cemetery that say 24/7 surveillance.
That is a great idea.
Okay. All right, why don't we move along then? The next item that's up is mayor's business, and I won't give you too much, except there's an awful lot going on. I attended the Westside Economic Alliance Housing and Transportation Summit, one, most of a day. We jointly worked on a follow-up meeting with the Kinder Morgan Pipeline people, and city attorney Jacobson has been kind of the lead on working with that. They came back with some proposals after several meetings we've had, and they are offering to upgrade some of the safety equipment, and it takes several other actions that I believe will be in the process to be kind of formalized as an agreement, and then we will move forward with those, so that's encouraging. Clackamas County Coordinating Committee meeting had a presentation by PGE about their smart grid and electrical vehicle charging station approaches and everything that's going on at PGE, which is also informative. The Clackamas County Business Alliance had a forum, had a breakfast forum with Dr. Lunch, Dr. Bill Lunch from, from OSU, who talked about the political dynamics in this election season from a whole career-long of perspective and knew a lot of data about, you know, polling and, and what has been found through that. So, that was very informative and entertaining. Wilsonville hosted the Town Center Plan Economics Forum, where we were joined by the Chamber of Commerce. Developer Fred Bruning, who is the CEO of CenterCal Properties, who developed the Bridgeport Village, Bridgeport Plaza development, as well as a variety of other developments across Western U.S., was there and participated. We had people from Greater Portland Inc. there. We had people from Leland Consulting, who works with cities on urban planning across the West and the country there. So, it was quite informative and good turnout, probably 40 to 50 people there from different perspectives, including citizens and, and business people, and we have some very interesting and potentially exciting ideas, you know, coming forward about Town Center and what it could become. And it will be very intriguing if some of the private development communities starts to see this as an opportunity that they might want to participate in. So, we're, we're sort of zeroing in on that. I attended Washington County Coordinating Committee meeting where TriMet kind of came. New, new manager, less than a year, Doug Kelsey, was there from TriMet, and actually had as candid a conversation as I've ever heard from TriMet about where things could be a lot better, what approaches we need to talk about, out-of-the-box thinking, different ways of doing business than has been done in the past, where our transportation system needs to head by the time the Portland metro region becomes a region of 3 million people, which is on the horizon. So, lots of things going on that are interesting. This week, I also have Clackamas County Coordinating Committee Subcommittee that meets before Metro every, every month to talk about the perspectives that the cities of Clackamas County have. Then, we have Joint Policy Advisory Committee- Then we have Joint Policy Advisory Committee on Transportation at Metro later on. We'll be looking at the regional transportation plan, including the freight transit and safety strategies that are contained in that. Greater Portland, Inc., Small Cities Consortium will be meeting along with the Metropolitan Mayors here in the coming week or so. And before the end of the month, we have Westside Economic Alliance. We'll be hosting a congressional forum for Congresswoman Suzanne Bonamici and Congressman Kurt Schrader. So there is an awful lot going on to try to keep up with, but we are doing our best. Offer the—the mic to councilors here to give us your perspectives or updates. Council President Starr.
Well, you mentioned one thing, so I'll just kind of keep going with it, and that's elections. So in case you turn on the TV and you haven't seen an election commercial, please do get out and vote, or send in your ballot. It does make a difference, and love to see everybody that participate in the process, so please do that. And just—just an announcement, community announcement. I believe this is the second time this year we're having a bulky waste day, and this time it's on 10/27. I'm assuming that's the last Saturday of the month at Republic Services on Ritter Road. So good chance to take advantage of that, and I believe—it doesn't say here, but I believe they generally ask for like a food donation to give to the food bank when you make your donation to Republic Services as well, so—
Correct on both of those. It is the last Saturday, and they do accept donations.
Cool. Thank you much. Council Stevens?
Thank you. So I also attended the Town Center Economic Summit Panel. What interested me was the perspectives from the city of Milwaukee and Vancouver, Washington. There were representatives from both those cities there, and both of them have gone through redevelopment in Vancouver, actually a fairly large one that they've been working on for a decade or so, the riverfront. And—and then Milwaukee, the development they've had with the opening of the—
Orange Line?
Tillicum—the Tillicum Bridge, yeah.
The Orange Line, too.
Yeah, and the Orange Line, which is part of that, and the pedestrians and—and the—the bike traffic and everything that's—is tied in with that—that bridge. And, you know, hearing how the—both the positives and the challenges they've faced in doing a development like that, the variety of incentives they've offered to businesses, how they've tried to create that mixed use, and what—that what that means, the issues of parking. Parking was a big part of that—end of that discussion of how you deal with parking and not take up so much space that you have these big swathes of parking lots like we sort of have in our town center right now, that take up valuable land for—that could be used in better ways. And then art and making the—the way you create a place that draws people in. And so we're doing all of that. We'll do it in our own unique way, because Wilsonville is different than Milwaukee or Vancouver. But being able to listen to those ideas and then think, okay, how can we apply some of those here, was really helpful for me. It kind of brought it—brought it more realistic just conceptually for me, and how they do that. So I enjoyed that—that meeting. The other thing I want to just do a plug for, the Library Foundation is doing their annual fundraiser at the library on the 27th, Saturday the—
Do your bulky waste and then come to the library.
Yeah, clean out your garage, and then have a nice wine tasting event. It's really a fun event. Very casual, well-attended, has been for the last couple of years since they moved it to the library site. And I just encourage people to go. The other thing, I think maybe Council Leahan will talk about the French Prairie Bridge, but I just want to mention that—the—the open house—she'll probably talk about the open house, but the online survey is open for the French Prairie Bridge design, too. That just came live this week. So, yeah. And it's, I think, on until October 30th. So if you go to the website, you can weigh in on what the bridge design—do a bridge design survey. It's fairly well—it's well light out.
Three choices.
Three choices. Three choices for the bridge design. Okay. I'm done.
Thank you. Council Leahan?
Yes. Just a—a couple of things to add to what Council Stevens was saying. The library fundraiser is a fundraiser, so it—it involves a $50 ticket or $95 for two tickets. But that includes free wine tasting from a—a bunch of—I don't know, you usually have five, six, seven local vineyards who will be set up around the library. So it is a very fun event.
And good food.
Good food, excellent heavy hors d'oeuvres, and of course, excellent local wines. It gives you a chance to taste them that you might not otherwise. And then there are a couple of free things. We have everything piled up on the 27th with your bulky waste day and your—and—and then in between, we have a couple of, I presume, free things. Free. The Harvest Festival at the Stein Boucher Barn, which is from 9:30 to 11:00.
It's free.
And that's free. Lots of kids' activities and—now my parks director left. Things like—
Brian will vouch for the fact that it is free. Nodding.
Things like hayrides and—
Pumpkin decorating.
Pumpkin decorating and think—harvest activities that kids always enjoy. It's always well-attended. Kids love it, and—and will hope the weather is as good as—as it is now. And then the other free thing, I'm presuming free, movie night? Scary movie night in the barn. So if you're not going to the library thing, and you want to go to some really scary movie in the barn, which probably has bats flying around in it—I don't know, but it would—
Can we vouch for the bats? Nope, we can't vouch for the bats, sorry.
But they were always flying around in the barns I was in, but—but that would be another good one to go to. And then the other Halloween-related thing is—that I'm doing is on the 30th, and that's the McMinniman's History Pub Night, and—and I will be doing the presentation there. That one is also free, although if you would like to have dinner, beer, wine, et cetera, you can do that as well.
What time is that?
Doors open at 5:00. The program starts at 6:30, but usually you need to be there about an hour ahead if you want to have a seat, because the History Pub Night in Wilsonville is very popular.
It is. Usually it's standing room only.
Yeah, it is every time. I don't know if it's because of the—the fascinating speakers or because of the beer, but—
It's probably a combination.
But many people come, so—those would be the important Halloween things to keep in mind. That would be all.
Thank you.
Oh, I was supposed to say about the French Prairie Bridge Design Open House, which I think Council Stevens already said, but it is the—it is this Thursday, the 18th, from 5:00 to 7:00 here at City Hall. It is an open house, so you can come in. It's not like it's a meeting that goes for two hours. It's an open house, so you can come in, look at the displays and the different bridge designs, and vote. You can also do that online, as Council Stevens said. If you can't, come on Thursday.
All right. Council Rockwell?
I'll mention that—well, I—I attended the Town Center thing as well this last Thursday. It was excellent, well-attended, and good substance. Kind of underscore Counselor Stevens' comments about creating active spaces and the role that arts—public arts could play in that. That was something that was mentioned by representatives from the different cities that were there, but also from the private sector as well. And it made me think about kind of the project that's going on in Wilsonville right now on the 29th. I—we recently had the online survey going on the last couple of weeks, and on the 29th of October, there's an Arts Heritage and Cultural Strategy meeting in the library at 6:00 p.m. So something to remember that—that—that work and project is happening here in Wilsonville. The—the Task Force for the Town Center project is meeting here at City Hall on the 23rd this next week from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., and that's a meeting for the Task Force specifically. So those—those two events are coming up. And then also to just kind of underscore Counselor Starr's comment and encouragement for people to vote. Also want to encourage people to vote, and mention that the drop-off place for the ballots used to be in the library, which made it limited to library hours, and now it is in the roundabout here at City Hall, which means you can drop off that ballot at any time, so—
Without getting out of your car.
Exactly, without getting out of your car. And so you—of course, you can mail it in, but you could also drop it off at any time, day, night, whatever.
It's a big box.
So—
Hold a lot of power.
Yeah. So thank you very much.
All right, sounds good. Why don't we do a little bit of real business here and ask for the consent agenda?
Resolution number 2707, a resolution of the City of Wilsonville authorizing the city manager to execute a professional services agreement with Wallace Engineering for Design and Construction Engineering Services for the Charbonneau Utility Repair, French Prairie Drive Phase Two, and Old Farm Road Phase One project. Resolution number 2709, a resolution of the City of Wilsonville authorizing Amendment Number 01 of Local Agency Agreement Number 31056 with the State of Oregon acting by and through its Department of Transportation, revising the total amount of federal funds available to construct the Kinsman Road Extension Project.
Thank you. Is there a motion on consent?
Your Honor, I move to adopt the consent agenda as read.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded that we adopt consent agenda as read. Two resolutions, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That's everybody. Five-zero. Thank you. Moving us into our public hearings, of which there are two this evening, starting with Resolution 2710.
Resolution number 2710, which is legislative hearing. A resolution authorizing a supplemental budget adjustment for fiscal year 2018-19.
So, thank you. I will call to order a Wilsonville City Council public hearing on Resolution 2710, as has just been read. Ladies and gentlemen, council will take public testimony tonight in a public hearing format. The hearing will be conducted as follows. First, city staff will present their report. Then we will receive testimony by proponents—opponents, and those neither in favor nor against the proposed resolution. If you wish to testify, please complete a speaker card like this from the counter at the side of the room. Pass it forward to the city recorder. When called, come forward to the microphone, state your name and address, and make your statement. I request those providing testimony not repeat testimony already given. Simply indicating your agreement with certain prior testimony is entirely sufficient. Ms. Roedacher?
Good evening, Mayor and Councilor. Kathy Roedacher, Finance Director. Tonight, we have our first budget supplemental adjustment for council's approval. As allowed by Oregon budget law, the city is able to adjust the adopted budget with a public hearing. This evening's request is what we consider our typical first adjustment of the fiscal year, and primarily contains rollover budgets that were not used last fiscal year but is needed to complete projects for this fiscal year. We have approximately 26 projects requesting over $3.5 million in rollover funds. These requests do not increase the overall project costs, as noted in the budget document. It just puts it—aligns it with the correct fiscal year. The projects include Kinsman Road, Extension 283, Exit 283 congestion improvements, and the Coffee Creek Interceptor. There is a—a slight adjustment that's needed for some funding sources for a project, the water treatment plant life and seismic upgrades, and annual GIS water model updates. These had been erroneously funded with SDC funds, and they need to be corrected to water operating funds. And then we have five non-CIP-related requests, which include our metro grants that were not completed last fiscal year, and that—that totals about $87,000. $68,500 to rollover the upgrading of the lighting project here in the council chambers. Are hoping to change the lights out to LED fixtures. There's a $25,000 rollover to complete the Lamella Tubes Replacement Project at the Water Treatment Plant. $87,000 is needed for the—the repair of Number Six Interfuge at the Water Treatment Plant. $30,000 of that will be rolled over from last year, and additional request of $57,000 to complete the repair work. And lastly, $20,000 is being requested for the replacement of GO membrane covers at the wastewater treatment plant. The total cost of that project is $45,000, but per our contract, the first $25,000 is covered by CH Toom Hill slash Jacobs. That covers the various requests.
Thank you. Did I hear you say Finance Director?
Yes, you did.
Yes.
Is Council aware that Ms. Roedacher has had a—a promotion?
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Appreciate it.
Nice to have someone with so much tenure with the city that knows all the backstory. Questions for Finance Director Roedacher on the budget proposal? Not hearing any. You may not have to leave, however. Is there any member of the public that would like to speak on this? I have not received any speaker cards. I'm not seeing anyone waving their hand either, so I will close the public hearing on Resolution 2710 and ask council, what is your will on this resolution?
Your Honor, I move to approve Resolution Number 2710 on first reading.
This are not for second. This is a one-shot deal, I think.
Okay, sorry.
Second. Moved and seconded. We approve Resolution 2710. Is there discussion?
Well, pretty straightforward.
Most of it's pretty routine. Projects didn't get done last year, need to get done still, need to carry the budget forward.
All right.
I'd just ask one quick question. Are any of these placeholders, or are all of—it's everything on this list going to get done this year that got pushed into last year? I mean, I guess the—the—the underlying question is, should we just act some of this, or is this in front of us because you have a very strong feeling that it's going to happen this particular year—fiscal year?
Well, you know, they did spend more money last fiscal year than I'd seen in many, many years. So I really feel like the engineering and the whole CD group are—are really moving forward on projects. They ended up spending over $30 million on their CIPs last year, so—
So everything in here needs to stay in here.
She would probably not be the person to ask. It'd be more the project manager.
Okay.
I would say yes.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
But we've kind of ramped up capacity. We've gotten some more engineering support and some other things like that, that maybe has slowed us down in the past year.
Uh-oh. Here we go.
And I think we will be fully staffed here at the end of October in the Engineering Department.
So—
New city engineer starts.
Quick answer is yes. We will be doing all that work.
Quick answer's the only answer.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other discussion? If not, I will call for the vote. All in favor of the motion to approve Resolution 2710, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes five-zero. Bringing us to our second public hearing on Ordinance 829.
Resolution Number 829, an ordinance of the City of Wilsonville amending Wilsonville Code Sections 7.418, 9.200, and 9.400.
So even though I just did this a minute ago, I—protocol requires me to read this again, so I will open the public hearing with regard to Ordinance Number 829. Ladies and gentlemen, council will take public testimony tonight on a public hearing format that—that will be conducted as follows. First, city staff will present their report, and then we will ask for testimony by proponents, opponents, and those neither in favor nor against the proposed ordinance. If you wish to testify, please complete a speaker card from the counter at the side of the room. Pass it forward to the city recorder. When called, come forward to the microphone, state your name and address, and make your statement. I request those providing testimony not repeat testimony already given. Simply indicating your agreement with certain prior testimony is entirely sufficient. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I am Amanda Guile Hinman, Assistant City Attorney, and I have with me Dan Carlson, our building official. Tonight, we are before you for some code amendments to clean up some outdated information in some of our code provisions, and they can generally be divided into two categories. The first addresses some incorrect dates in our—the collection of our payroll tax, and the second is some outdated references to our residential building code and our plumbing code. So these are just some minor updates to get us caught up to our— updates to get us caught up to our current practice.
Counsel, any questions for staff? We had some discussion in work session to clarify this.
I have one question.
Counsel Stevens.
Thanks. So, this is for you. When we're talking about the plumbing codes and we talk about specialty codes, what makes them special? Why do they use that term?
That's a great question. That is a title that the State of Oregon gives, the State Building Codes Division gives to all of their specialty codes, whether it's electrical, mechanical, residential. They all have this title in their official...
They just call them specialty codes. That's the term used...
That's correct.
Across the board. Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Not so special.
They're not special.
I would just have a legal question. I don't know. As an ordinance, is this a first reading or doesn't require a first reading? Doesn't require two readings as an ordinance?
It does require two readings.
Okay. It just doesn't...
No, it doesn't. I was noticing that, too. It's on all of the...
It doesn't say first reading, but...
It goes in the staff report. The recommendation and the recommended motion are correct, and the staff report doesn't.
The agenda's not listing it.
The paper agenda does.
Yeah, I noticed that, too.
The staff report is the official.
Okay. That's gonna be confusing.
And more particularly, the ordinance is the official document, and it does say first reading.
Okay. Anything else?
No.
All right. Is there any member of the public that would like to speak with regard to Ordinance Number 829? Not seeing any. I will close the public hearing and ask council, what is your pleasure with regard to Ordinance 829?
Your Honor, I move that we adopt Ordinance Number 829 on first reading.
Second.
Thank you. Been moved and seconded that we adopt Ordinance 829 for first reading. Any further discussion?
I'll just make a comment.
Yes.
Same comment that I made during work session. I really appreciate staff cleaning up these minor things. I think, I know it takes time, and it would be easy to put this off because it's not a priority, especially, you know, but it's important to have our records and our codes accurate, and I appreciate you taking the time to do this work. Thank you.
All right. I will then ask for the vote. All in favor of the motion to adopt Ordinance Number 829 on first reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Bringing us to new business, Resolution 2676. I am in a potentially conflicted legal position as a property representing a company that owns property that is part of this, so I'm going to ask Council President Starr to handle the process on Resolution 2676, and I will return for Item B of new business when we get to that point. Thank you. So, I'm recusing myself.
Resolution Number 2676, a resolution of the City of Wilsonville authorizing acquisition of property and property interests related to construction of the Fifth Street Kinsman Road Extension Project.
Before you, I'll just say, Your Honor, I would like to...
Holy cow.
Aren't you, Your Honor? I don't know. Mr. President.
Even better.
In Your Honor, you have a...
Okay. I need to declare that I am related to someone who owns some property in here, but I am not financially involved with them in any way. So, I am, if there's no objection, I will proceed on this, but if anyone objects, I would be happy to recuse myself.
Okay. So, is this a public hearing as well, or it's not? So, we can just go ahead and have the report then?
Good evening, councilors and President Starr. This is, I'm Nancy Crusher, Community Development Director. I am here to just present a resolution that would authorize staff to proceed with property acquisitions for easement and right-of-way for the Fifth to Kinsman Project. The project is, was formerly called the Old Town Escape. This is a parallel route to Wilsonville Road that connects Boones Ferry Road to Kinsman Road, and then, we'll also be extending Kinsman Road between there, Fifth Street, and Wilsonville Road so that we have an alternate route, so you don't have to use the Boones Ferry Road-Wilsonville Road intersection every time you need to go from those two points, A and B. And part of the requirements for acquiring property as a government agency is we have to follow certain federal laws, and we have to get permission and let everybody know that we're going to be starting to proceed with property appraisals and negotiations. And while we hope it would never end in, we also need to be aware that this could end up in eminent domain, which is where we would condemn the property. So, the list of, there's a long list of all these little slivers of property that are involved with this project, and the list of property owners and the type of acquisition are listed in the staff report. Then, attached to the resolution, there is a lengthy, all of the property descriptions are included. I might note that at this time, these are, we feel like these are very close to what the actual property acquisitions will be as final design proceeds, and even sometimes during construction, there can be minor adjustments. And the idea is to get the properties acquired and properly described to be in the best interest of both the public and the property owners. And yet, if little changes occur, we want to make sure you're aware of that and that you would authorize us to proceed with negotiations, et cetera, with some minor adjustments to the actual property legal descriptions. With that, I think that describes the intent of the action, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Counsel, went over this in work session, but any other questions that might have come up between then and now?
No questions.
So, there's a fair amount, but most of these are very small pieces of land that we're talking about.
Other than the actual swath of roadway.
Correct.
And we do own some of the right-of-way already, but there's between stormwater easements, slope easements. Some of them are temporary, some of them are permanent, and then, the actual right-of-way. We also are building the Ice Age Tonquin Trail through there, bike lanes, sidewalks on both sides, well, sidewalks on the north side as well. So, there's a lot of different types of easements and acquisitions, and they vary in size. Some are very tiny. You're right.
And I'd also just like to say, so we're going to go through this again, I would assume, on the urban renewal portion, but a big reason for this, and our citizens kind of noted this in the citizen survey, was one of the biggest issues that we have is traffic. And while there's a number of things that we cannot control traffic-wise in this city because it's more or less state or federal, meaning I-5, this is a place that we can really make a difference with traffic within our city that we can control. So, I think this is going to be a great addition to give us a safety valve with what's going on in Boones Ferry. So, with that, council, what's your pleasure?
I can make a motion.
I move to approve Resolution Number 2676.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. Any discussion?
I would just agree that this is an important connection for the city that has been long anticipated to give another route out of Old Town, then into the congestion of Boones Ferry and Wilsonville Road.
Yeah. Agreed.
I would say that I don't envy staff having to get appraisals on 32 square feet of land. But I guess we have to do that. It's really tight. Yeah, there are some larger portions, but there's some of those. I mean, it's 39 square feet, 142 square feet, 32, 45. They are just smaller than bus stops, you know. I mean, they're just really tiny, but we have to do that. So, thank you for doing that work, too.
Well, with a motion and a second, I'll call for the questions. So, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carries four zero. So, that's my limited time as being Your Honor or whatever, so...
Great power.
You did it well.
Way to go, buddy.
Great.
Holy cow.
A benevolent dictator.
I almost declared Scott Starr Day in somewhere in there, but I didn't.
So, the second item of new business on our agenda tonight is a proposed professional services contract for our city lobbyist, the Leo Company. This is a relationship that we have had for some 15 years, but has not been formalized through the means of a contract. And in alignment with good business practices, we are proposing at this point that we do formalize as a contract. So, in front of you is the proposed three-year contract with the Leo Company, as well as a scope of work, which is quite voluminous, all the different types of things that this company has been involved in representing the city for the last 15 years and would continue similar into the immediate future. Mr. Leo principal is Greg Leo, and he has a long history and unusual knowledge of the past history of a lot of issues that come forward, as well as relationships and interactions with the legislative people for many years, and has done really an extraordinary job through the last 15 years of representing the city. The contract is something that has been proposed and reviewed by the Leo Company, as well as by staff. You have a detailed staff report from staff about all the different types of lobbying work that are involved, as well as kind of outlining the different issues that we have to keep tabs on and the knowledge that we have to have in order to best represent the city. So, this is the proposal that is in front of us at this point in time. Are there any questions for staff with regard to this, or would staff like to make a statement about it?
Just if you get to the point of making a motion, I want to point out that the staff report has three Xs where the resolution number should be. So, the maker of the motion should put the numbers 2711 where the three Xs are on both of those lines.
So...
But I will say, from a staff perspective, I've worked with Mr. Leo for seven years. He's been very effective for us at the legislature, and I did speak earlier in the council meeting that sometimes it's not necessarily what you get done from a positive standpoint. It's also sometimes what you prevent bad from happening, and we've had a lot of success preventing bills that would be unfriendly to Wilsonville specifically or in general, based on specific legislation. So, he also stepped in when we had the cyanotaxin issue and was very effective at handling all the media for us on that. So, he's been pleasant to work with, and he's been very effective from my perspective.
If not, I would, so we're going to identify this as Resolution 2711, is that right?
Correct.
Okay. So, I would be open to a motion on Resolution 2711 at this point, and then, we can have any discussion that council would like, once we have a motion on the floor.
Your Honor, I move to approve Resolution Number 2711.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. We approve Resolution 2711. Discussion.
Okay.
Counselor Starr.
I'd just like to say several things about Wilsonville. One is, we do have a good track record in the state of perhaps getting more than our fair share, and I think we have a great staff that help us achieve that. And when I say that, it's not like we're being stingy or anything, but we're investing that in a town that's growing far faster than most other towns in the state, and we've been able to do very good things with that. And, you know, employment lands that are to the north of us are the next phase of a lot of this. And I, you know, there's probably, this is a saying about people, but it probably goes as well for cities, but there's people that make things happen, watch things happen, and then, there's the people that just wonder what happened. And I think we are a city that is making things happen, and just because of the nature of the growth of our city, we need someone at the legislature to help us make things happen. And so, I think this is just a natural bridge to help us continue on the track that we're on right now as far as growth and accumulating the dollars from state or federal that help us. And he does have federal experience as well, so...
I would just add that he is appreciated in Salem, I think, by a number of others besides the City of Wilsonville. Certainly, the League of Oregon Cities, he works closely with, and because a lot of times, they're protecting cities generally, whether it's franchise fees or whatever, and he stays on top of that and works closely with their lobbyists as well, on behalf of cities generally, and of course, Wilsonville specifically.
Counsel Stevens.
Thank you. So, there's a scope of work along with this, but I know that Mr. Leo goes above and beyond with, in everything he's done. That history has already been proven. When Wilsonville implemented the Citizens Academy, he stepped, it was a brand-new program, he stepped up and helped with that. We talked about other things that he helped with during work session. You know, I mentioned the tourism. It's not even part of the scope of work, but I know that it's something that we're working on, and he's going to help with that. The last bullet point in the scope is other duties as assigned by the city council, city manager, public affairs director. You know, there's going to be more, and because it's a dynamic, changing, growing city, that it's hard to even think about all the things that we're going to face and be challenged with and want to do to make our city better. And Mr. Leo has always been there, helping all the way along, all along the way. So, I'm really pleased that he's willing to continue working with the city, and formalizing that, again, is an excellent idea, just like with all our other contracts that we're doing. It's good to have it established so we know and he knows what the expectations are.
Counsel Rockwell?
Sure. I just also wanted to say that I appreciate that we have a contract in order now. I think that's good for everyone, and appreciate staff in their work in preparing this material for us to review and comparisons as well. And I mentioned, last year, I believe I attended the League of Oregon Cities Conference and was able to see, kind of witness, some people's, many people's reaction and relationship with Mr. Leo, and that was a really, a good thing to see and made me feel very proud of our city, too, to see those interactions. So, yeah, I appreciate for the good work that we'll continue to have done on behalf of Wilsonville.
Okay. If there's no other comment, all in favor of the motion to approve Resolution 2676, excuse me.
2711.
I lost it. 2711, okay. Yes, that's what my notes said. All in favor of the motion to approve Resolution 2711, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes five zero. Thank you very much. How are we doing? Shall we continue on, or does anyone need a break here? Are we good to keep going?
No, we're good.
All right. So, continuing businesses next. Ordinance Number 825.
Ordinance Number 825, and this is a second reading. An ordinance of the City of Wilsonville adopting certain amendments to the Wilsonville Development Code and Comprehensive Plan Regarding Accessory Dwelling Units, as well as other Development Code amendments to provide clarity and functionality to the... Code amendments to provide clarity and functionality to the code related, uh, to accessory dwelling units and other housing.
Was there any additional information we had requested on eight, two, five? I can't, don't recall any.
I don't recall any.
No, and I don't think we've gotten any comments either from...
Okay. No further input or, or anything we should be aware of?
Nothing since last...
All right. Uh, if that's the case, uh, council, what is your preference with regard to ordinance number eight, two, five on second reading?
Your honor, I move that we, uh, adopt ordinance number eight, two, five on second reading.
Second.
Moved in second. We adopt eight, two, five on second reading. Any discussion desired? Counselor Stevens.
I'll make a quick one. The depth of information in the packet on this topic was amazing. Uh, you know, the planning commission really did a lot of work on this. I know we did, but they really spent some time on this. It went back, you know, since early June, even before. So, um, and lots of, um, opportunities for public to comment and attend those meetings and everything. I was, I was really amazed.
So, they massaged the product on the...
Yeah. It took up half the packet, yeah. So, um, yeah, so it's well-vetted, a well-vetted code.
Uh, if there's no other discussion, I'll ask for a roll-call vote on ordinance eight, two, si... two, five on second reading.
Counselor Stevens?
Yes.
Council President Starr?
Yes.
Counselor Akval?
Yes.
Counselor Lehan?
Yes.
Mayor Knapp?
Yes. Passes five, zero. Thank you. Bring us to ordinance number eight, two, six.
Ordinance number eight, two, six. An ordinance of the city of Wilsonville adopting the 2018 Parks and Recreation Comprehensive Master Plan as a sub-element of the City of Wilsonville Comprehensive Plan, replacing all prior Parks and Recreation Master Plans, and repealing ordinance number six, two, five. And this, again, is second reading.
Okay. Second reading, and we have some staff input to receive at this point?
Very little, but honorable mayor and city council, um, I'm here with Brian Stevenson, who's our recreation manager, and this, uh, ordinance eight, two, six was passed the first reading with, uh, about, I think it was three technical or verbal verbiage changes. We made those changes. We can put those on the screen if you want a brief PowerPoint of five, uh, slides. If not, they are in there. Um, other than that, I don't have much to say, except for this has been a very long process, and thank a lot of people from planning to my staff, to city administration, and also to the city council for your patience, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
And I guess I would only respond is that all of that front-end process helps this become a durable plan that the community has, you know, bought into and will carry us forward in a stronger way than if we had something that was not that robust.
And I, I appreciate that, and that was the, the main point, was we didn't really like the first product, maybe second product, but we wanted to get something that was, uh, good for Wilsonville, not good for anywhere else, and, uh, that's why this kind of went on and on and on, but we, uh, we feel like we have a good product and a good document that will, uh, be good for Wilsonville for the next ten, fifteen, twenty years. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, do you want to see the slideshow, or are you...
We've done this one, all right.
I'm good. I'm sorry, all that work to get the slideshow ready.
It was a bet on it, and I won.
Now they're betting on us, council.
Betting on whether would you move on a slideshow. Because you don't get enough of those.
Yeah, right. Uh, council, uh, what is your pleasure with regard to ordinance number eight, two, six on second reading?
Your honor, I move that we adopt, uh, ordinance number eight, two, six on second reading.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second. We adopt eight, two, six on second reading. Any discussion? Been a lot along the way.
Yeah. Fifteen months.
Um, I would, I would just say I would, um, encourage everyone to continue to work closely with the Parks Board and, um, um, and move these, move these projects forward when we can, because I know a lot of them are very popular out in...
Yeah, they are popular, and, and we know that there are contingencies within our population that are, are very anxious for certain parts of this to move forward.
I did, I had a conversation with Counselor Lehan today. I think she had some, uh, some citizens that had talked to her, and, um, I do think it might be time, maybe when we go into the next goal-setting, to start talking about a Parks Bond. I think the cities and the citizens are ready for something to, to at least have the discussion.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we, we tried the Aquatics Center. I think there'd be a lot more support for things like access to the river, to, um, improving athletic fields or expanding athletic fields, so it might be something that the new council will want to think about in terms of goal-setting.
The skate park was the other one that...
Skate park is also one that you could throw into a geo-bond.
Yeah.
So, that, that might be something that the new council, that's seated in January, in January, might want to consider, and I'll bring it up during goal-setting next year.
Great. Great. Okay. Anything else? If not, I will ask for a roll-call vote.
Counselor Stevens?
Yes.
Council President Starr?
Yes.
Counselor Akval?
Yes.
Counselor Lehan?
Yes.
Mayor Knapp?
Yes. Passes five, zero. General?
Thank you guys very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's important.
And ordinance number eight, two, eight.
Ordinance number eight, two, eight on second reading. An ordinance of the city of Wilsonville amending the 2017 Transit Master Plan for inclusion of the programs, of the programs enhancement strategy.
Uh, here again, we've had, uh, quite a lot of back discussion and work session discussion. Is there anything further council should know from staff at this point?
Mr. Bresser is, is here if you have questions, and I believe Ms. Hendricks is, is as well if you have any questions. If not...
Council, any further questions for staff?
No. I don't think so.
I'm seeing none at this point. Council, what's your pleasure with regards to ordinance eight, two, eight?
Your honor, I move to adopt ordinance number eight, two, eight on second reading.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second to adopt eight, two, eight on second reading. Any other, other discussion?
No.
Then I will ask for a roll-call vote, please.
Counselor Stevens?
Yes.
Council President Starr?
Yes.
Counselor Akval?
Yes.
Counselor Lehan?
Yes.
Mayor Knapp?
Yes. Passes five, zero. Thank you. That's all the scheduled business. Uh, anything from the city manager?
I would like to inform you that you have an urban renewal meeting right after this meeting.
Okay.
And that's all I have.
No? Oh, no.
You don't, you don't get to vote on it. Sorry.
Anything else beyond that? No. Uh, any legal business?
I will just mention, as the mayor mentioned earlier, we did have another meeting with Kinder Morgan, and this is, was supposed to be our final meeting, where they came, they came with, um, a proposal, and, and they did come back with, uh, proposal that, that addressed several significant issues. Uh, so I'm not going to talk specifically about them tonight, because I want to see them in writing first, but I will say that the group of stakeholders who were at the table were very pleased with what they came up with and felt like that did address the city's concerns, so we're working on an, on a agreement that, um...
An MOU.
Yeah. That will outline what they're going to do and when they're going to do it, so I think that's, that's good, positive news.
I also attended that meeting. I think that's a fair characterization, that everybody around the table felt like they had gone off and done their studies and analysis and came back with a serious plan. So, it was good to see.
Yep.
And then the other thing I was going to mention, again, the mayor alluded to this earlier, um, the, um, there are some new regulations that have come through the federal government regarding the new, um, wire, 5G wireless, little small cell devices that are going, that are coming up, and how much the cities can and cannot regulate them, and they're not favorable to the cities. We are going to spend some time at the November five council meeting in a long work session, uh, talking to you about those regulations, and we've got an expert who's going, who's been here before with helping us with the code, because we're going to have to tweak our codes more to address these new regulations. We do have some things going for Wilsonville that other cities don't that will mitigate a little bit of the negative impact, um, but we'll talk more about that, so be prepared for that session. Hopefully, you can all be there, and it may make our meeting a bit long, but it's important because we've got to have our ducks in a row before the first applicant comes in. Once the first applicant gets through the door, that sets the precedent for all others who come after that, and there will be a lot of these things.
That work session is brutal.
So, uh, I'm hearing that League of Cities is talking lawsuit, you know, in a major way. I don't know what the timing of that is. I don't know who is the appropriate contact. Perhaps Mr. Leo can scope that, but I don't know.
That's true. We're, we're working with League of Oregon Cities, and City of Portland is also filing, filing a suit on their own, um, but...
As are other cities.
Yeah, as are many other cities across the country, and the person who will be coming to speak to you is actively involved in several of those, which is one of the reasons why I wanted to nab him early on, because he's going to get very busy.
So, so one of the strategy questions that I think it's important for us to define is whether filing a suit or joining in the filing of a suit would toll the question about the first one through the door setting the precedent.
You think that's what this expert will...
Yeah. What we're hearing now is this is not going to toll anything, so we'll have to be ready. If, if something comes out of the lawsuit, then we'll be able to address it, but again, that's something that he'll talk about next time, so I don't want to say more than that because I'm not the expert yet.
So, when, when is the work session? Is it scheduled?
November fifth.
The next one? Okay.
Next meeting.
We have a lot on that.
Okay.
None of it can be delayed, so we're probably gonna start the meeting at seven thirty, the regular meeting.
Yeah, and...
Our work session's long.
And we'll probably not have an exact session, at least at the top of the meeting. We'll probably wait till after.
Right, and if we can...
Prepare yourself mentally for a long meeting.
Yeah. So, get plenty of rest.
Okay.
Five-hour energy.
With that, I think we will call adjournment at eight fifty-nine. Uh, anyone need a break, or shall we move directly to urban renewal?
Keep going.
Keep going?
Yeah.
Okay.
We kind of know what it is.
Recorder's all ready, so I will call to order the Urban Renewal Agency City of Wilsonville meeting for October fifteenth at nine o'clock PM, and request a roll-call, please.
Board member Stevens?
Here.
Board member Starr?
Here.
Board member Akval?
Here.
Board member Lehan?
Here.
Chair Knapp?
Here.
Thank you. Such some input. Is there any member of the public that would like to address the Urban Renewal Board? I am seeing none, and therefore will move on to our, uh, public hearing item, Urban Renewal Agency Resolution two, eight, nine.
Resolution number twen... two eighty-nine. A resolution authorizing a supplemental budget adjustment for fiscal year 2018-19.
So, uh, I will call to order a Wilsonville Urban Renewal Agency public hearing, uh, on URA Resolution two eighty-nine, as has been read. Ladies and gentlemen, agency will take public testimony tonight in a public hearing format. First staff will present their report, then we will receive testimony by proponents, opponents, and those neither in favor nor against the proposed resolution. If you wish to testify, please complete a speaker card from the counter at the side of the room, pass forward to the city recorder. When called, come forward to the microphone, state your name and address, and make your statement. I request those providing testimony not repeat testimony that has already been given. Simply indicating your agreement with certain prior testimony is entirely sufficient. Ms. Roedker.
Thank you. Um, just as a housekeeping item, the attachment aid to the, in the packet for the resolution was set out, was incorrect, um, but thanks to Kim, she was able to send you all the corrected, um, uh, copy, and it, the website was updated as needed. So, tonight we have our first supplemental adjustment for the board's approval, as allowed by Oregon budget law. Uh, the board is able to adjust the adopted budget with a public hearing, and we have two projects. Both are in the East Side Urban Renewal District. Uh, first one is a seventy-two thousand dollar rollover, um, from last fiscal year for the continuation of the Town Center Concept Planning Project. And then we ask, also have an additional request, uh, four hundred and forty thousand dollars, uh, for the Beckman Dip Bridge Project. Uh, this is a request for new funding. Um, if you recall, last year, during the budget process, we were still in the process of getting the amendment to the, uh, year two thousand plan, so we didn't know for sure what the funding source was going to be, so that's why it was not included in the budget. Yeah, but that has been taken care of, so those are our two projects.
Very good. Any questions for staff? Not seeing any. Uh, is there any member of the public that would like to provide testimony with regard to URA Resolution two eighty-nine? Seeing none. I will declare the agency public hearing closed and ask the board, what is your preference with regard to Resolution two eighty-nine?
Your honor, I move to approve URA Resolution number two eighty-nine.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second that we approve Resolution two eighty-nine. If no discussion, I will ask for the vote. All in favor of the motion to approve Resolution two eighty-nine? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes five, zero. The, uh, next two new business items, um, we have staff presenting, and, uh, here again, if I understand the scope of each of these, I'm going to recuse myself because of a property ownership that might be conflicting and ask Board Member Starr to handle these items, and I will return for item C.
So, is the staff report combined for both, both resolutions?
No, it's different. I can do that.
Yeah, why don't you? And then they can just vote on each motion separately.
Yeah, that sounds great.
Thank you.
Um, good evening, Urban Renewal Agency. I'm Nancy Crash, I'm the Community Development Director, and what, what you have before you tonight is the Twelfth Amendment to the Year Two Thousand Urban Renewal Plan. Um, the, this is a minor amendment, and it, uh, is adopted by resolution. What the, the need for this amendment is that, when the plan was first adopted, it did not identify specific properties that could be required for, um, acquisition for any of the projects listed in the Urban Renewal Plan. In designing the Fifth to Kinsman Project, which was previously known as the Old Town Escape, and as is so noted in the, in the Year Two Thousand Plan, um, it does provide specific instructions on, should specific properties be identified as design, um, proceeds on any of the projects, you need to do an amendment, and, um, what I've done in the packet is provided you the resolution that, uh, documents the amendment. There's also the specific language that goes in the Year Two Thousand Urban Renewal Plan, which lists each of the properties, and then also we have the report up. We, well, technically, we don't have to do the report on the plan because it's a minor amendment. What we did was we followed the instructions in the original plan, and it, it, it told us to make the amendment as listed in section six hundred of your staff report packet, and then in, in addition to that, we needed to add an exhibit in, um, showing where the properties are located. So, you have a colorful map that shows exactly where the properties are located, as close as we know right now. That is the, um, Urban Renewal Twelfth Amendment Resolution, and then the purpose of that was to identify properties we need to acquire for the Fifth to Kinsman Project. And then this, the next resolution you have on the agenda is the, um, authority to acquire the properties, and some of these, there is the potential for eminent domain, and we always hope that we do not need to go there, but if we are unable to negotiate, um, a satisfactory, um, value for the properties, either they be Eastmans or Wright-Boy for the project, there is that potential, and, um, this Resolution number two eighty-one then, uh, authorizes staff to move forward with the appraisals, the negotiations, et cetera, to acquire the properties, and again, they are listed in the staff report, and then also attached, which, um, I don't think I brought it up with me, but there's, all of the legal descriptions for those properties are in the packet, and, um, with the caveat that these are, uh, these are pretty close to what they think they're going, that they to what they think they are going to need to be. There is a chance, as we move through final design and all the other things that happen during construction, they could get modified somewhat. So we're also asking that you authorize us to continue the process, even if some amendments could occur with the legal descriptions. And I think that pretty much covers the basic information. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Counsel, any questions?
No, no, we're not in counsel.
Okay. So we've got Resolution 281 and Resolution 286 in front of us. So regarding Resolution...
280 and 281.
I'm sorry.
280 and 281.
Yeah, 280 and 281. So with that...
Mr. Chair. Not what you are now. For the board. I would move to approve URA Resolution Number 280. And I'm doing 281 also?
No, separate.
Okay. Let's say just 280. That's the only one I'm interested in.
Does anybody have a singular interest in seconding 280?
I'll second.
You do? Okay. Thank you. So with that, any further questions or discussion?
Pretty straightforward.
Okay. Then I'll call for the vote. All in favor of Resolution 280? Please say aye.
Aye.
And it passes 4-0. Now, 281.
Someone else interested in that one?
Singular interest.
Singular interest, yes. A focused interest on just 281. Oh, yeah. You're reading... Okay.
This one's important because this is your condemnation authorization. URA Resolution Number 281, a resolution of the Urban Renewal Agency of the City of Wilsonville authorizing acquisition of property and property interests related to construction of the Fifth Street-Kinsman Road Extension Project.
Any further comments from staff?
No. There was a question that came up in work session about there were some remnant properties, and the question was, what are we going to do with those properties? And I did go ahead and look at the plans between now and then. And we are just going to landscape those areas at this time.
Okay.
That's great.
With that, board, what's your pleasure on Resolution 281?
Your honor, I move to approve Resolution Number 281.
Mr. Chair.
Oh, Chair. Sorry. Mr. Chair.
I'm moving pretty fast tonight, so...
I can't keep up with all those titles.
We have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any further discussion?
No.
No? Okay. All in favor of Resolution Number 281? Please say aye.
Aye.
Carries 4-0.
Since we've ironed out all the kinks, I think we got it down now. The next three resolutions, we can handle with one presentation. And then, we can read each resolution by title by the city attorney, and you can vote on them separately. Now that we all know who's on first.
I would invite Jordan Vance, our Economic Development Manager, up to present this.
Okay. So let me read the first one before the presentation starts. And these are all, as the city manager indicated, and we talked about in work session, they're amending the ordinances to extend the termination date for an additional period of a year.
For three TIF zones.
For three TIF zones. So URA Resolution Number 286, a resolution of the Urban Renewal Agency of the City of Wilsonville amending the termination date for 26755 Southwest 95th Avenue Tax Increment Finance TIF Zone.
Thank you, Barbara. Good evening, Urban Renewal Agency. I'm Jordan Vance, Economic Development Manager. And as Barbara mentioned, we're here tonight to propose to extend the termination date of tax increment finance zones in three site-specific properties in Wilsonville by one year to allow for further analysis of potential changes to the program to facilitate high-value development and job creation. So just for some context and history, in 2013, the council approved three site-specific properties within city limits as individual urban renewal districts. And the program was designed in a recession environment to help stimulate development on vacant or underutilized buildings in Wilsonville and to convert the spaces into higher-value manufacturing facilities. It's similar to urban renewal, but there's no true debt involved with TIF zones. So TIF zones, by contrast, use the promise of future property tax rebates as the debt needed to allow for an urban renewal tax increment arrangement under state law. None of the TIF zones... So there are six properties in this program, and none of the properties utilized the incentive. So in 2014, three of the TIF zones were taken off of the program because development had happened organically on those three sites. So the three sites remaining were 26755 Southwest 95th Avenue, which is the Microsoft Building, which is currently vacant as of the past year; 27255 Southwest 95th Avenue, which is Pacific Foods. And we're proposing leaving that in the program because there had been conversations with staff on making improvements to the building. And the last building is Building 83, 26440 Southwest Parkway Avenue. And that building is partially vacant. So there is a user on the west side of the building, and there's currently 100,000 square feet which are still vacant. So what we're proposing is to extend the termination date by one year for these three sites. And during that time, we'll do some further assessment and evaluation of this program and come back with a recommendation in 2019 on how to proceed.
Board, any questions for staff about the proposal? Mr. Starr?
Are you going to pull together the task force to go over this and have them make a recommendation to council? Or are you just going to make a recommendation to council?
That was the plan, is that we'd reconvene the task force sometime in 2019 and do a full assessment of the program and what tenants and development we've seen in the last six years. What we... From a preliminary look, we can tell that there... We know the threshold was fairly high for the criteria. So it's $25 million in investment in improvements and the creation of 75 new jobs at 125% of Clackamas County average wage. And we know that no tenant has been close to meeting that criteria. So one option is to potentially maybe have a different framework or different type of criteria. But yeah, I think that would be the plan, is to reengage some of the stakeholders and the task force, and then come back to the URA agency.
Yeah. Since I won't be part of that, I'll just throw in my two cents now, which would be to either change the program or just do away with it and call it good, which may not actually be the bad way to go. So... But... Thank you.
We thought it'd be important to have some policy discussion with the council or the Urban Renewal Agency. And then also, at your request, at your desire to reengage the stakeholder group as well. We can make it as simple or as complicated as you can imagine. But we felt like there has been no public dialogue about the actions that we could take. And we feel like it's important to have that dialogue before we just let it expire.
It kind of operates as an enterprise zone. So it would, from a competitive advantage standpoint, put us in the same playing field as Portland and some of these other communities like Hillsborough that qualify, and we don't.
Right. And then, when I get a call saying, do we have incentives? I can say yes and talk about this program.
Yeah. For specific... So it's... I think we did set that threshold very high. Do you remember the discussion? Was that we want to hold out for really high-paying jobs? So maybe our...
And the ability for higher revenues.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay. So that will be a policy discussion that needs to take place, and we'll figure out a process to do that. I understand we should have three separate votes.
She has read the title for...
The first one.
286. So you may entertain a motion and a second and discussion and vote on that. And then she can read the other two.
Okay. We'll do that accordingly. Board, what would you like to do with URA Resolution 286?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve URA Resolution Number 286.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second, we approve 286. Discussion? Counselor... Ms. Stevens?
Board Member Stevens?
So I think we just need to remember, at least have it said, that when we did this program, the economy was very different than it is today. And so, these were incentives to try and move and get some users into those buildings, some tenants into those buildings, some owners into those buildings. So, you know, I'm not surprised that there's been this shift, and especially, given both the economic climate, but also the fact that Wilsonville is a great place to do business. And so, businesses here look to come here. So, you know, it won't surprise me if, in a year from now, we're right where we are tonight with the other three just letting this go. We'll see what happens. I guess my question would be is, if, say, somebody moved into... A business came in, moved into the Microsoft Building completely, would we be back here saying, let's take this one off the discussion because there's a tenant in there? Why even have it be part of it? Do we need to go through that process? Or can we just write it out?
I think it's a good discussion to have. And I think it's also important to remember that the economy goes in cycles.
Yeah, that's true.
There's nothing that's preventing another major downturn in the economy. So it's good to have, from an economic development standpoint, it's good to have tools in your toolkit. I know we get a lot of calls from the state about what can you offer. So having those on the books, even if we don't use them, it's not necessarily a bad thing. But I think that's the discussion that the...
Task force can have.
The task force can have. And then, recommendation and whatever future council we have can have that discussion about whether or not they want us to have those tools.
It'll be interesting to see what kind of recommendation they come back with because we vetted those criteria pretty carefully. And so, would they make them even more robust? Or would they loosen them up?
I don't know. But I think what we have now that we didn't have then is we have data of actual people that have been interested. So we can say, we probably could have landed this one or that one had we had this incentive versus that incentive. So that's something I think Jordan will bring to bear in terms of his experience that he's had since he's been here.